Maybe there's a little asphalt burn place right here. I don't know, that's just alternative things to think about. If, rather than over in the water temple, maybe those are other options.
Why didn't they choose it in residential area?
Can we talk about that when we go back to the other side?
Oh yeah, okay, just asking.
Because I remember one of you had some really good points in this location. And I'd love to see those really good points. I heard about a flooding area, I heard about wildlife crossing corridor, I heard about particular trees that were really important. I'd love to see those. So, we're just gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about, I'm gonna be the devil's advocate here. So I'm gonna play both sides of defense. Because as some of you have talked to me, that's what I, what I'm, what I'm paying you. That's what Rick pays me, right? So this tree says save me, right? That tree is, I'm not an arborist, but you know what? I, I, I bet you I have an arborist report as part of it. That's not a very healthy tree. It looks like its, its tops been kinda shut down. I mean, it's, it's not a very great specimen tree. Versus that oak tree right there, right? So if we're talking about a footpath, and if the footpath put this tree out, but preserve that tree right there, that might be an option. Because this tree, if we remove this tree, we would replace many more of these trees and plant them in a manner so that they could actually flourish and succeed.
Another car.
Another car.
Where would you plant them?
Part of the idea. Well, look at the top of it.
But we're saying every tree.
Okay, so, so here's the thing, here's the thing. The Nile Canyon Trail outside of this area, when we look towards the west, or if we go to the water temple, is going to remove trees. It will remove trees. There's no way you can build this trail without removing some trees. So there will be mitigation required for that. There has been some discussion about planting proper riparian trees inside areas within Alameda County that would benefit from additional trees, right? So, one of the things I've spoken about is I said, look, if I lived here, right? Maybe I want to provide some assurance that folks that are walking along here are not walking into my, my yard. So maybe there's an option to build a fence, and maybe there's an option to put additional trees in this location, or additional vegetation in this location to provide a visual barrier between this trail and the properties that are on the north side of the road. Just an idea.
But the fence, animals, what about that?
I get it, I, I, I get it.
I mean, that's the water, is there?
I, I totally get it. I totally get it.
And how long, how long does it take to tell these kind of trees?
Well, this, I don't know, but I will have our biologist let you know. But I tell you right now, that looks like the mature version of this, right? This is very young, that's very old. And our friends at PG&E have already compromised this one.
Uh, there's another car.
So when trees get replaced, not necessarily in the same local area, it's somewhere, do you typically walk a mile?
And this tree doesn't look like a version. But I'm not an arborist, and I'm not, so I can't.
Why don't we keep walking?
Yeah.
Hello.
Hi.
You know, we're asking for walking. Nothing just slaps down here with those two feet tied in. Nothing just falling like that. I'm just kidding you.
So the bikes are gonna go on the road?
The bike could go on the street, because the vehicle volume is so low.
So as far back as here, you propose to put that out.
I'm not proposing, I'm just, I'm just explaining what I, like, what I, what, I'm just, I'm just explaining, I'm just responding to how. There's a lot of folks that, like you saying now, there's a lot of folks that are very much, like, yeah.
Well, you're, you're also looking at how the things are not sitting here. You're looking at it all.
Okay, Robert, I'm gonna make a comment. When the fire hydrants went in, um, this water department had to do a lot of work. Had to do a lot of work up here for the fire hydrant. And at one point, the, um, water, it flooded here.
Okay, flooded here. Wait, wait, it flooded in a rainstorm, yeah?
And so what they did was they put this kind of a swell here, and then they connected it to this culvert that goes across the street.
Yes.
So every kind of, this is where the water drains.
Well, but it seems to me... So it seems like Rick's crew probably have to clean this pretty frequently, right?
I don't even think they clean it, because I know I've come to clean it.
And shouldn't there be more warning signs for night time when someone's driving by?
So, 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 see, see, here's a perfect, here's a perfect example, right? So, this is functional, it works, but if, 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 if a trail or some sort of pedestrian improvement was placed on this side, it's pretty reasonable to think that this would be adjusted and upgraded.
One, just one thing, you keep saying pedestrians, but we're knowing it's really a bicyclist trail, so... I think you're trying to maybe soften it?
Well, let's, 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 let's make sure we're really clear about, let's be clear about definitions. I keep, I keep hearing, and I keep seeing things, and I, I'm not sure where it's coming from. This is a trail that accommodates pedestrians, it accommodates bike riders, it accommodates equestrian users.
Is that the definition of commuter trail?
This, any trail that's built, right? Could accommodate commuter uses, it can accommodate recreational uses. For instance, if I lived, I heard, we've heard comments from folks that live on Kill Care Road that wanna ride their bikes from Kill Care Road to Fremont, and they don't wanna use Highway 84.
And we're saying we don't want that, so are, are we being mentioned at all?
That's why I'm here! That's why I'm here, gang!
You might have two, and then you, this is a great, this is a great group of people for this small town of Sanol. Doesn't everybody think? I mean, we have, this is a good turnout. You might think this is not big, but we're a very small town, so this is wonderful. Thank you all so much for being here.
This is being quoted, a big town. This is impressive. This is very impressive.
Thank you, thank you.
Also, since we're talking about definitions of trails, the 24-hour use, I think, is a big concern too. Is, if you use a different, uh, if you define the trail differently, does it pose a dust?
That's actually a really good point, and I checked in, because I said that at the strolling roll. Because, because, you know, part of Rick, Rick's task was securing funding for this project, because the county can't pay for this. So in looking at some of the grantors requirements, they seek, uh, the trail to be open 24 hours a day. So if I'm a commuter that's going to my job at 2:00 in the morning, I need to be able to use this. I checked in with East Bay Regional Park District about the Alameda Creek Trail, and they actually limit use, they curfew between 10:00 PM and 5:00 AM. But for those users that need to commute on it at all hours of the day, they offer a ticket or a voucher or a permit to do that. Now, we don't know if the trail is maintained by Alameda County, whether that's legally possible to actually put a curfew on it. Because it's not reasonable, you know, part of the reason why this came about was folks that live in Sanol and Destinations West said, "We can't commute between here and western Alameda County, besides on Highway 84." And I can't say, I, I realize that's been like that forever, but I, I wanna remind everybody that things are changing, right? Because now that we have electric bikes and other electric-type devices, people's range are really increasing. And if you look at like the San Rafael Bridge, you look in the morning, you see the number of people riding across that, it's quite a bit.
On bikes?
On bikes, electric bikes.
It would be interesting to hear like, who is coming out of the woods to commute to Fremont on a bicycle? The demand for, I mean, just you look at the, the population here, all these people are retired. I'm like the only person that might commute, but I'm not commuting out of the woods.
Anybody know anybody that's ever ridden their bike from here to there?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, just the demographic of everyone up on Kill Care Road, like, I mean, it's a new generation coming through, but it's not the demand to, to offset all this and make decisions on the few, doesn't make sense.
Tell us how many people would be interested in riding the bike?
Yeah, those numbers is what we wanna hear about.
So, the environmental impact study, the environmental impact study doesn't evaluate... It evaluates the environmental impact and the alternatives compliant with the goals of the project. And guys, also remember...
You're hired to do your job, not the, not the demand.
So, so remember, 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 gang. I, I just wanna remind everybody. I wanna remind everybody, we're looking at phases two and three, which is Palomar's Road to Sanol at a very programmatic level in the Environmental Impact Reform. So, all of this information, everything people are saying, and all the alternatives are gonna be presented. And I'm not sure the Board of Supervisors are gonna select a preferred alternative for options two and three, or, uh, phases two and three. Because the eventual construction of some trail that either goes to the water temple or here is gonna require a lot more design and a lot more outreach. And really, our mission is to do phase one. But if we did it along the south instead of here, we wouldn't, it wouldn't be going near a house at 24 hours a day, would it? We can talk about that when we get back. Let's talk about that.
But, but maybe you keep walking. But one thing is, we aren't against the trail. It's just what she was saying. It's, if the trail's there, everybody's, no one against the trail, I don't think anybody.
Like, guys, I, I'm gonna, just, I'll give you a piece of advice. If you wanna argue this, you have to think about a reasonable argument. I can stand on this street all day long, I can walk up and down this street all day long. There's nothing, this is a public road, right? That's public property. What does, how does the trail create an adverse environmental impact? That is the argument you wanna construct.
It's dangerous, it's residents live on this road.
Yeah, it's the number of people who are traveling in the middle of the night.
More, more finding the waters of the trail.
Uh, that gentleman ran like a lot about horses. He can tell you all about horses. I don't know, I don't know anything about horses, so I can't tell you.
I'm the horse guy.
He's the horse guy. And I'm hiring him to design the horses.
All in.
So just to note, this is a very, very broad area here, very, very broad.
Yeah, there are people that come down, there's no parking signs, but they still go.
I would've been better off to park here during the prom. That was 40 years ago.
I know, okay, some people, um, have, residents have gone there saying, hey, no parking. But we were worried about the Tyler Ranch, and we have over 400 people that are gonna park on our street, right?
So, there's no, but there's no parking on the street? Because this is a fire anyway. Does the sheriff enforce parking on here, or is it...
Yeah, it would be sheriff. It's possibly, um, also highway patrol, but usually sheriff.
It can be. It's another culvert.
We turned on the air conditioner for you today.
Well, they're almost ready to open, I think.
Maybe it's like, maybe for cattle or horses?
Oh no, it's gonna be a trail. You see those two roads that go up?
Yeah.
Right in the middle, there's pretty fast, you know? Know the road? Uh-huh. That's the trail that they're cutting, for this, uh, for the Tyler Ranch. Miss, please?
Yep. So the county just replaced it from here. Does that sound bad, Doc? But there's, you don't see any flooding down here.
But there's been so much work done. Those cows didn't like us. So were you part of the, um, putting our, no access to 84 signs on our corner? I wish you had a sign at this road entrance, you know, where the crossroad is. Says, "84 that way or..." Something like that. Okay, so...
So, 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 just, 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 yeah, break a box. You know, and I, I've said this before publicly, if the trail was to come here, maybe it just stops right here. Maybe it stops at the staging area. Maybe it doesn't continue on, because if I'm a biker or I'm a walker, it's not that big of a deal just to walk down the street into Kill, uh, down, down to downtown Sanol, if it was to come here.
So I have a question, if they, she had a good point, if they come, they bring their cars with their bicycles, are they able to park here 24 hours if they don't? And is there anybody that's going to be...
The, the East Bay Regional Park.
The Park District, yeah.
And also garbage, if it's open 24 hours, what about garbage?
On the trail?
Either on the trail, either in the park.
So in the trail, so policing of the trail, and waste pickup, and all those, those items, that's a safety element, and that will have to be managed through the county, the Park District, the city of Fremont, right? There's gonna have to be an organization created to police the trail. Because it is MNSFUC, because there's, it goes through various public properties. There's gonna have to be a mechanism to manage the trail, to police the trail, to clean up trash on the trail, to maintain the trail. This is the responsibility of the Park District. This, if the trail was to end on this side of the road, that is the staging area for this section of the Nile Canyon Trail.
And does it continue here? Or is it this way?
This, the Nile's Canyon Trail leads here, it goes westward, crosses... Yeah, it goes right, there's a, the road actually, if you walk back to there, you can see the old road, it keeps continuing on. I think, wasn't that the old?
Yeah, the old highway.
That was the old highway. And it, and it used to go, and there was a bridge that took it over the other side. We generally, and this is why this section is really, really complex. This has a lot of issues, we've already, we, we can see the complexities of this here, right? But as we head west, I mean, there's some major hillsides, and it's, it's not easy. It's, it's like this, it's a big project. Yes, sir.
So, it, it, it sounds like you haven't decided what the layout of the trail will be. You say if it ends here, or there, if it goes to the south side. It seems to me it'd really be difficult to enumerate what the impacts are if you don't know where the trail is going. Does that mean that you'll do an impact study for ending here? That would be one alternative. The south side, would that be one alternative? Would an alternative be going all the way up Foothill Road? How do you arrange the EIR so that all of these alternative groups are included?
So the envi- environmental impact study, right? It basically says, in order to get a class one trail from there all the way out to the train station, there's tree removal required, there's grading required, there's a lot of improvements that are necessary to make that happen. Those impacts to those trees are then quantified. Just like if the trail goes all the way to the water temple, it cuts down a lot of trees and goes through a lot of vegetation that's never been touched. So that impact is evaluated. So in the end, the environmental impact study basically says, this alternative, this alternative, and the sub-alternatives, we talked about like this, they all have these different environmental impacts. They can be mitigated by doing this, this, and this. This alternative meets the objectives of the project. This alternative doesn't meet the objectives of the project, right? It, it lays all this out so that the decision makers, namely the Board of Supervisors, select the preferred alternative and certify the environmental document. But because this is a programmatic level document here, we're just touching the surface in this section.
So what, at what point would the public get a chance to respond to what they decide? Or can we...
So, so, is this the proper forum to talk about this now, or?
I think we should.
I think we should, yeah, we should walk back.
Yeah, let's go.
There's nothing at that end of the...
Sorry, that's okay. I, I'm happy to keep walking, we can walk all the way to Niles. Mike's a fast walker, though. He kicked my butt out there.
We're not stopping the traffic coming to...
Sometimes the car goes up that hill, which is...
Okay.
All right, why don't we go ahead and get started? Just because I know everyone's cold, and, uh, for those of us, those of you who are sitting here waiting to apologize for being a little late, we took a stroll down to the dead end of Foothill Road. For those I haven't met, who haven't met yet, I'm Anna Wang, I'm one of the neighbors on Foothill Road. I wanna also thank Luna, and I hope you know where Jamie is, uh, uh, other neighbors on Foothill Road that have been trying to marshal folks together, and Jim, who I don't know where he went either. Thank you so much, and, um, also I wanna recognize the Sanol Citizens Advisory Channel for trying to be part of this conversation too. So thank you all for being here tonight. So the goal for tonight is really... So the goal for tonight is really to hear from Robert and his colleagues, but know that this is, is the stage where we're not able to necessarily change anything tonight. I think we need to better understand what's going on. Ultimately, this is going to be, I think, a county board of supervisor's decision, but we want to make sure that our input and our feedback is incorporated and that they're thinking about the very small number of Sanolians. Even though we're small, we're mighty, right? So let's make sure we, we contribute our voices. I'm gonna let Robert, if you want to introduce yourself and talk a little bit, but the hope tonight is really to be able to Q and A. Like what are the pressing questions that you want answered? What can Robert share with us? And what do we need to go back and, and get answers from other people on?
Thank you. My name is Robert. I'm joined by Rick, who's with Public Works, the Traffic Division, and Mike Niedra, who's the project manager for the trail project. So I've been fortunate enough to be able to support the county and stakeholders in planning the Niles Canyon Trail since 2014, right, Mike?
Fifteen.
Yeah. Fifteen, fourteen, fifteen. So I, I want to let everybody know that everything we know about the trail and all the previous planning efforts has resulted from meetings with folks like you. So I apologize that we haven't had this opportunity. I was here in Sanol in October of 2015, so I don't think anybody was here at that time, but the room was filled. But I appreciate you being here tonight. If you go onto the website, nilescanyontrail.org, it has the history of everything about this project. And I just want to remind everybody, when you see preferred alternatives, preferred option, or thoughts about it, that was derived from previous conversation with folks. We had to start somewhere. We had to go somewhere. That's what's in those documents. You can look at the past history of it and you could make judgments based on it. We are now in a formal environmental impact report. You will see the notice of preparation. We are getting ready to release the draft environmental impact report. I really want to do it in June. This is going to have all of the alternatives to get a trail between Niles and Sanol. As we discussed tonight, and no different than what was discussed in previous years, the trail, when it reaches Sanol, might land here at the train station. It might land at the water temple, or there might be different iterations of it as it comes up Foothill Road. I also want to recognize that there will also be the no project alternative. We're not building a trail at all. So you will see that in there. The trail is broken into three phases. Phase one is the section between Niles and Palomar's Road. That is the section we're most interested in getting complete because it's something that is a little easier to build. It has less complications than phases two and three. So in the environmental document, it evaluates it at the project level. It looks at very specific impacts and it has very specific designs related to it. Phases two and three, namely the section from Palomar's Road to Brightside, that's phase two. Phase three, Brightside to Sanol, whether at the water temple or downtown here. It's a, at a programmatic level. It's a much higher level view assessing what are the potential impacts? What are the alternatives? And how does this comply with the goals of the project? There, I've heard some folks ask the question, is this a commuter trail? Is this a recreational trail? It's both. It could be used for recreational folks. It could be used for commuter folks. As I've said, there's a lot more people using electric bikes. With an electric bike, you have a tremendous lot more range. On my commute on Wednesdays, tomorrow I go to Nevada, I'm going to see a lot of folks riding their bikes across the San Rafael Bridge because the electric bike makes that more possible. The trail is designed for no vehicles. It's for walkers, bikers, strollers, and equestrian users. It's designed for folks of all ages and abilities. And part of the reason why I talked about this being a 24-hour trail is that because it's a piece of transportation infrastructure and there's no feasible alternative route off a road for a walker or a biker to get from Sanol to Niles, and because a lot of the federal and state funding requirements make these things available for folks 24 hours a day, that is why we talk about it being open at all times. There will be no lights as part of the project.
You had mentioned funding sources, that the county didn't have all the money for this. There were other funding sources. Is that federal money or?
We don't know yet. We don't know. We gotta get through. So the environmental impact report is our first step into formalizing the project and, and deciding what the community, meaning the community being folks that live and use these facilities all throughout our area, plus the responsible agencies, East Bay Regional Park District, Alameda County Water, SFPUC, Caltrans.
The reason I ask that is it seems, everything I've ever done, the people writing the checks usually have a big say in whether it's going to happen or not. And if we don't know who's going to be writing the checks. Then it's just the county supervisors or?
We, we, in order to position, so big projects, big ambitious projects, need a defined plan and need a certified environmental document to compete for funds. So we can't really compete for funds until we actually have, have an environmental document. Yes, sir.
Can you talk about what you learned from Sanol at your most recent visit with the Sanol Citizens Advisory Council? Cause you did come and speak to us. Can you, do you remember kind of how that went for you?
Uh, I remember, and the, the feedback we received was that, uh, Sanol did not feel like they were heard. They felt like they did not receive proper information on the project. They also felt that routing folks into downtown Sanol was inappropriate and the water temple was the preferred route.
Thank you. Well, it certainly sounds like you were, you heard us at that meeting.
My job is to listen to all stakeholders.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Does the draft EIR and final EIR, do they deal with phases one, two, and three?
The draft EIR will, deals with phase one at a project level and phases two and three at a programmatic level.
Are you open to receiving alternatives for phase three?
Uh, what I would like to do, here's what I would like to do. Here's what I would like to do. I would like anybody to tell me if there's an alternative that I, we don't know about, to tell us that tonight. That's what I'd love to hear.
One thing I just mentioned to you is the idea perhaps of a, a parking lot that would be open 24 hours a day just beyond the end of existing Foothill Road. It could be 10, 10 spaces, five spaces, but that way I think it might alleviate some of the concerns about people with, with parking in Sanol or with traffic up and down Foothill. Because then, um, that would be a place where people could start and it would kind of, uh, protect the town a little bit from, from some of the impacts.
Just gonna take a couple notes. I'm not gonna, okay. I'm not gonna comment on, on what people, uh, if people offer alternatives, I'm not gonna comment on it. But, uh, I'll just give you a tip. It might show up in the EIR.
When, when you come up with phases, are there, each one of these phases, is there a parking at each end?
Yes. If you, if you look in the draft documents that we're providing, each location has a parking facility.
And the study, I assume, is like predicting how many spots are needed. So there's a parking lot over on Nile's side. There'd be one at Palomar's, there'd be one at Brightside.
There's not one at Brightside. So, so there's, if you, the, the document states that there'll be parking in Nile's, there'll be parking at Palomar's, and there'll be parking at East Bay Regional Park District's, I wish they would be. Not 24 hours a day.
The park district told us specifically that that was not the case. They were not supporting parking for the trail.
That's interesting.
You should write a note on it.
Well, you know, so, so here's, here's, here's a fact. I'll, I'll tell you a fact, right? A fact is that East Bay Regional Park District can comment on the environmental impact report. They might, they might, they might say, they might comment on it.
Yes, they might.
Can I address this question?
Yes.
Okay.
A good way to determine the impact of a project like this is to find another project just like it and see what happened there. Fortunately, we have one of those. Mission Peak. The trailhead at Mission Peak. Have you been there?
I've walked at Mission Peak many times.
Ah, you know it. Have you been there on a Saturday and a Sunday?
I have. I've been there on a Saturday.
And so you realize, okay, so, I don't.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, 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 yeah.
I don't have the data. I wish I did. I didn't have time to go get it. I hope, I think I still can if you want me to help you. But the data says.
I have that data. Yeah.
You have that data?
Yeah.
How many cars go through there? Lots. Thousands. Each, each day, each Saturday and each Sunday, there's a thousand cars parked there. What are you, what is the impact of a thousand cars each day in Sanol?
I'm going to suggest something. I'm going to suggest something to you. I'm going to suggest that Mission Peak and Vargas Plateau and these other destinations that draw lots and lots of users is different for the Niles Canyon Trail.
This is better.
Oh, I'm going to suggest to you.
Better.
I'm going to suggest to you.
Not for walkers, for bikers.
But I'm going to suggest to you, I'm going to suggest to you that the Alameda Creek Trail, which is the westerly extension of this, is a more similar condition to the Niles Canyon Trail. And I'm going to suggest that. The Alameda Creek Trail, so when you actually head out into Niles and the trail that runs along the creek there, that goes all the way to the bay, uh, the, the bay, bay trail. That trail right there, we have user data for that. 24-hour a day user data since 2010. We use that trail information to estimate the number of users that will use the Niles Canyon Trail.
And, and the, and you have parking for a thousand cars there?
Oh, no, because we don't, we, we don't see a thousand people using a similar section of trail along the Alameda Creek Trail.
But you do at Mission Peak. That's what I'm saying.
No, Alameda Creek Trail is 10 feet wide.
Along the, along the, uh.
The creek, it's, it's a class one trail. It's exactly what's proposed here. What I'm suggesting to you is that Mission Peak has become a destination for folks in the Bay Area because of this. It's become an Instagram hotspot.
And this won't? This is a biker's paradise.
But Mission Peak is, Mission Peak is different because it's like, it's a, it's a, it's a summit to climb, right? It's a success when you reach the top and you can sit up there and see a picture of it. Sanol is beautiful, but I don't think it's the same thing.
When you get to the end of the trail up here and you go up the hill, you'll see further than you can from Mission Peak.
I'm going to make another suggestion. If phase one gets constructed in the next five years, there will be real-time user data established about how many people use the trail and how many people park to use the trail. And that could, that, that would then help inform what the section from Brightside to Sanol would be.
Don't take it wrong. I don't hike it, okay? I think it's a great idea. I've done it for years, okay? I'm like you. Okay. But you don't, you don't think that's a biker's paradise, huh?
I, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know until we see the data.
You, you said you have data on the?
Maybe we can get some of these questions out here.
I have two things. One, you, you said how it would affect the town. This, the tone would affect this town as far as this quaint country town that we have now, having something end right in the middle of smack dab in, in, in Sanol. We know that, there's no doubt. But if you put it at the four corners, which you keep saying like it's almost an impossible thing, it's so centrally located. It's from the freeway. It's from the bicyclists that go on Calaveras. It's from the ones that go on Sanol Pleasanton Road. And it's going to have lights and it's going to be the safest and it could be open 24/7 and not affect any residents at all. I am.
I think that's a great point. And I'll, and I'll, let me, let me share something that the SFPUC has told us. The SFPUC at this time is reluctant to allow the trail to end there if it's going to be open at times where they're not going to be, uh, where that's where it's not going to be open.
No, they could have it open 24.
They told us that they will not, I, I literally.
Then why can't they have it 24/7 in front of our home? See, that doesn't even make sense. Just like you're saying about going down.
Because, because, so, 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 so this is where I, where I say, if you want to construct an argument, right? If you want to construct an argument about.
Yeah, what can we do?
Okay. Okay, I, I'm gonna play both sides of the fence now. Foothill Road is a public road. You can't stop people from traveling down it. No matter how much you want, you live on a public road. I can go down it anytime I want. I can't loiter there, but I can travel there.
But why would you want to?
I'm just saying it's a public road. The water temple, the water temple is private property owned by the city and county of San Francisco. So. It's a public road, right? I, I don't know why they make the rules this way. They make the rules this way. So, so I don't know what's going to happen with the SFPUC in the future. Maybe the SFPUC will open that to everybody 24 hours a day. I don't know. But that is a complication with, with, with stopping. Now that is, that is just one complication. So that is going to be enumerated in the environmental impact report.
Well, we've heard people from the San Francisco Water Department are for it.
I talked specifically to our liaison, uh, earlier this week about this.
So when you're saying the San Francisco Water and parking there, are you, where are you talking about parking? Going through the gates there and the, and the?
Yeah, go ahead. So parking would be going through the gates. On the weekends, right? It's open from nine to five, I think, right? But after five, it's closed. You can't enter us.
So I had someone suggest something to me and they're not here. And it still has to do with San Francisco Water. Now, it would make a few people here in town upset, but it wouldn't be where residents are. San Francisco Water owns, if, if you don't go in that and you act like you're, you're, you're coming from what I'll call the four corners here and you're going down, down the canyon here and, and you go just underneath, how, how the train track goes over, you just go underneath. Then on your left-hand side, where those nurseries are, is San Francisco Water. So you wouldn't be going into their gate and all of that. What if it was asked if part of that property could be used for the parking? You should take it away from these residents.
So, so the way, the way I understand it, the way I understand it, and this is something that I'm actually working through right now. But the way I understand it is San Francisco is concerned about trespass.
And we're not on Foothill Road.
So, 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 so this is what I mean by making an argument. If you want to make an argument about this, right? So there's, there's, there's two things I suggested before, right? Building a class one trail, cutting down a lot of trees, changes the aesthetics and the visual feel of that corridor, right?
And that area doesn't have the trees when I'm talking about it. It doesn't have.
All I'm saying is, all I'm saying is if you're going to make an argument about it, that would be one argument to say. And that's my responsibility to respond to that argument, right? Just like this gentleman here said that he didn't, he, he, he thought that a thousand cars were going to come in here. Then somebody needs to cite where a thousand cars are going to come from because I don't believe that. I, I don't, I cannot, I, I cannot come to a thousand cars coming here on a Sunday.
Based on?
Yeah.
Based on my review of other class one trails in the Bay Area. The Devil's Slide?
My house over there, it's got cars parked everywhere to go up in the park.
Yeah, to go up in the park. And there's probably been a lot more because COVID had hit, right? Yeah.
You don't think people will get on their cell phones and say, look at this great trail that follows the stream all the way down into Niles? And they're gonna, they're, they're not gonna go.
He has a perfect argument. He has a perfect argument and he's, I have to refute his argument. If I want to defend that, well, I do, because that argument's going to come out and I have to refute that argument or I have to provide. I just want to remind everybody, I don't have a personal, I, I, I don't have a preference, right? But my job is to, is. I, I get it. I get it. I get it. But I'm just saying, I just want to remind everybody, I don't have a personal stake in this. I'm here to listen and provide you feedback.
But we all do.
I hear you. So that's why I'm here and that's why I'm providing you suggestions.
Thank you.
I got a, I got a quick question.
Yes, sir.
On the access road, instead of going through Foothill, why don't they use the old Niles Canyon Road that, from the corner to come in and out? That way there's no traffic coming through Sanol. That way there's no traffic coming through Sanol.
Where is that road?
Chris Miley up there, see old, the Niles Canyon Road used to come through Sanol, go down Foothill and keep on going and at the turn?
Yeah.
Come out there. The road is still there, it's still.
So it does, it comes, it comes, uses that road, it drops down and goes into the staging area.
Yeah. Why don't they use that road for in and out?
That's one of the options, that is one of the options.
Because it's, it's still there.
Yep, yeah, I know, we walked it, Mike and I walked it, yeah. Yeah, no, we, that's a, that, yeah, yeah, right on.
That way we won't have the impact of cars and bicycles and everything coming through town.
Are you suggesting to connect the end of Foothill to 84?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
You know all the people that are going to be cutting through to try and bypass?
Yeah, you can get on the, the old Rose Ranch and then get on the Vargas Ranch, then the next Vargas Ranch. I mean, all the roads are already up there, I mean, the minimal impact, environmental impact would be hardly nothing.
But those roads are steep.
What's that?
They're steep.
I don't know, I rode horses on them all my life.
So, okay, so we are required to build a trail that has no slopes greater than 5%.
Accessibility, right?
Accessibility. So that's, when we say all ages and abilities, that's what that means.
There's a question back here.
Vargas Plateau, they haven't changed the roads in there, it's a park and it's open to the public. Huh?
Right side.
What?
It's between here and Palomar's, you know what that is?
Well, listen, this isn't going to be a dirt trail?
This is a paved 10-foot-wide trail for transportation, recreation and transportation. Did I miss something?
No, no, where at Brightside was.
Oh, Brightside is where the rail yard is, uh, where the Niles Canyon Railway stores their, uh, yeah, trains.
And how does a, how does a trail get to the rail yard?
It goes around the backside of the rail yard.
On Fermus property?
No, on the county's property, through the rail yard. Yes, sir.
So, did you say that, uh, the tra, one of the ideas that is being looked at involves connecting the trail to the Pleasanton Ridge system?
This.
And using the, uh, infrastructure that's already in place here.
So this can be confusing. If you go online and you look at the reports that were written, you will see that the original report looked at three items. Looked at the Niles Canyon Trail, looked at connecting the Ridge Trail in Niles to Vlaio Mills, and the final section over here making a trail connection from the Water Temple up the hill. This project looks at one item, a trail linking Niles and Sanol.
Accessible paved trail from Niles to Sanol.
Yes, sir.
Let's see if I understand this, it's three phases, correct?
Yes.
Phase 1, does that get you on this side of, uh, of, uh, the road?
No. Phase 1 ends, Phase 1 brings you from Old Canyon Road up through the old, uh, Pipe Property, up alongside, on the south side of Palomar's Road. Ends at Palomar's Road and then there's a bridge that crosses over to link to Palomar's Road.
Is the bridge part of Phase 1?
The bridge is part of Phase 1 and that bridge connects Palomar's Road to the trail.
So I'm thinking, once it's on this side of the road, it's coming into Sanol.
No, so the trail.
Well, you'd have to go back.
No, no, so, so the trail, Phase 2 of the trail, if you look at the concept plan, it continues on the south side of the canyon, on top of the old aqueduct, on top of the secret sidewalk. And then it continues on the south side of the canyon to near where the highway used to cross at Brightside, then it crosses to the north side, that happens in Phase 2.
Phase 2 has the bridge.
Yes, Phase 2 has the bridge.
So are you considering alternatives to Phase 2?
Yes. There's a whole series of, uh, additional analysis that was completed for Phase 2.
So Phase 1 with its bridge that goes over, that's just another access?
That's another access for folks that are using Palomar's Road to get onto the trail so they can bypass Highway 84.
So does the ERA, is that EIR?
EIR.
Does that include comments, written comments from us?
Oh yeah, so, so what's going to happen is the EIR is going to be published, it's going to be made available on the county's website. I had a great conversation, I think you provided me that comment, to send a postcard to everybody in the city of, uh, into the town, in the town of Sanol, uh, to let everybody know at the CAC meeting, it's out. And then you folks all have the opportunity to comment, write questions in.
And what's the deadline for those written comments?
It'll be, it will be all listed inside that, you will get notification multiple times on it. And we're actually going to extend it, right? Because there's so much interest, we're going to give a little more time for people to provide comments.
But you're saying you want to do this by June?
No, we release, you're going to, there, there's going to be a document that's released, it's going to be a gargantuan report. Big, big. Maybe a thousand pages, maybe a thousand pages, right?
Like in Washington.
And how many days do we have to read it and respond, is it like 30 days, 45 days?
30 days, I think is the minimum, but I think we're going to extend it a little bit because I think, um, I think we need to extend it a little bit. But, 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 okay, so the one thing I just want to remind everybody, when you respond to an environmental impact report, you can't say, "I don't like the project, this is going to destroy the quality of life." Or, "I hate trails," you can't say, you can say it, you're, you're more than willing to say it, but the response that's going to come back is that this is about the merits of the project. You want to construct a statement that the environmental impact report is either missing something or needs to analyze something, like, like your comment. Mission Peak has a thousand people, there's going to be a thousand people using this, you need a thousand lot parking lot. That, that's, that's an argument to make. And then, then I will provide an argument against that and we will go to the Board of Supervisors, you'll make your argument, Rick and I will respond to your comments and the Board of Supervisors will make a decision.
I, I have an alternative, buddy.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, can any of that?
That's all in the SFPUC, that's SFPUC property, that's all SFPUC over there.
At San Francisco.
That means we can't use it?
You've got to lobby that.
That means you can't use it.
We can, I, we're all residents of Alameda County, we, we, we can do, the project has an alternative to land at the Water Temple. As I understand it, the Water Temple is not open 24 hours a day, it is closed after 5:00 PM. On the weekends, it's not open for parking, maybe that's going to change in the future, I don't know, but right now, that's kind of a problem.
If, if there is an alternative to that, which.
I would like first of all to know whether it's been considered, and if not, I think it should be.
Yes.
Is that all of the concerns that SFPUC has, or legitimate, in terms of protecting the infrastructure and the facilities that they're going to have out there. And it's, it's not just the Water Temple, it's the Water Temple, the Watershed Center, which will be open, uh, within the next year. There's a high-tech native plant nursery out there, there's the Ag Park out there, and they are going, besides the Water Temple, and then they have committed to restoring a large picnic area behind the Water Temple. Now, all those facilities are in the same basic location and they would be extremely heavily used. I talked to the SFPUC representatives, uh, the stroll and roll, and they said they're, they want people out there. The security problems is a legitimate problem, but the solution to that is to not have the trail go to the Water Temple and into that area where all those facilities are. They're all on the other side of the Arroyo de Leguna. Uh, and if you have your trail in your current southern option, which comes across, uh, crosses the creek at the railroad bridge coming out of the canyon, you're on then the north side of the creek, of Alameda Creek. You stay, have your trail go right along that, your creek, up until it gets to the Arroyo. There, you make a sharp, uh, left turn and bring the Class 1 trail right up to two blocks from here. And, and then you have a footbridge where from the trail into the SFPUC facilities that can be controlled. And so it can be open so that the people using the trail have easy access to it. It's just walking across the bridge and a block and you get to all these facilities. You come up with your Class 1 trail and you have your staging area literally two blocks from here. And this, and the nursery property, it's SFPUC property, but I don't think you're saying that under no circumstances can you use SFPUC property. And I think that if you could, with these circumstances, they would like to have people have access to their facilities and yet not have 24-hour access to those facilities. You could have your staging area there, right now, if you walk over there, the lab was over there recently, and there's at least 40 acres of former nursery area that is empty, not being used. And if you, so that you would have to relocate a, a little bit of nursery operation, but they also have the old Valley Crest Tree Facility up Calaveras Road, which is probably 70 or 80 acres, which is now just totally empty because they've moved and they don't have a replacement. So that, that property is very close to us and it, I don't know if there's any reason why the SFPUC might not be very, uh, interested in cooperating and making that available because they have options for the nurseries that are there. And we would have all that traffic over there, but still within two blocks of where we're standing right now. And it would deal with the parking problem. The parking problem is right now a major problem for us without this trail.
You know what, so I think this is a really good point and we actually, this was a really old option, which you're expressing was something we looked at in 2016-ish. So we're going to take that one back out of the box and we'll tease that one up.
And I've got one question about that.
So thank you.
If, um, if the PEC, I mean, sorry, if, um, if, um, SFP, uh, that, the Water Department doesn't, uh, is not, uh, willing to do that, would it be an option to buy some land from them for a parking area?
Anything's an option, all we're looking at, all we're looking, so the environmental document, it's looking at, what's the least environmentally impactful project that meets the goals of the project? So everything we're talking about, if. We, I have to go, because it's been a long time since I've looked at that, right? So thank you for reminding me about that, we'll go back, we'll look at that, we'll document it, we'll include it. Thank you for reminding it, reminding us of that.
Is it set in stone, the 24-hour trail system, because that changes the dynamic of almost everything? You don't, if you don't have to have it 24 hours.
So this is something I don't, I, I don't know how you can have a public facility that's not open 24 hours a day.
East Bay Parks is free day.
East Bay Parks also allows permits for people to use it. So like the Alameda Creek Trail and their facilities, they actually, because people were complaining that it's not realistic. If I go to work in the middle of the night, how do I get to my job? And if I only have a bike, so they actually permit access.
When was that report done for the necessity to facilitate people commuting from Sanol to Fremont to need that 24-hour access trail? When was that study done?
Uh, so, so, well.
Like, has that demand changed and gotten more people, more people on it, or is it just the same?
There's no, there's no calculated number of people that have said this. It started as a recreational trail in the 70s and then from my discussions I had in 2015 over here at the school, there were folks that said they lived in Sanol and wanted the ability to walk or bike west, at least. So I don't have statistical data to, to state that. Yes, sir.
I think that Jim's comments about the south side of the Arroyo, where the secret sidewalk tunnel comes down and meets a parking lot with a gate and a paved road that goes up to the east. It goes right to the nursery.
Yep.
Property, it's all flat, a lot of it's paved. I can't see any reason that it would be impossible to negotiate with the water company for use of that area. Because I, I put trails from Sanol to Mission Peak, et cetera, on water company property. It took seven or eight years, you know, of what we're doing here. But, uh, but it did happen and we pay a fee, you know, parking this.
You know, thank you for reminding us of that, that, and I just, I just cannot recall, I can't recall why that fell out of favor, but we're going to, we're going to, and this is a long time ago, it's five years ago, so let me, let us pull that one back out.
The program, the student just came up with it and Dan here reiterated it. Does that mean? Does that mean all of the program goals for the project goals? Have the program goals changed?
So the project goals, and don't quote me on this, I know I'm being filmed, but don't quote me on this. I think it was, uh, all, all, a Class 1 trail for all users and abilities, done within a realistic timeframe, least envi, minimal environmental impact, reliable transportation for all 24 hours a day, I think that was the goal.
Well, what I'm trying to get at is, are you planning on considering any alternatives that don't meet program goals?
Yes.
Irregardless of.
Yes, yes.
Impact.
Yes.
Environmental impact.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
One is, which is on this road, we have, we have the mile 10 train, we have the regular train. So having an, and we have the park now, we're going to have the park. So that's a big concern, having the additional pollution that, uh, would be going, um, and, oh, I forgot my other one. No, the other one was, oh, there I got. How long, when would this happen, this trail? I mean, are we?
We're not, we're not, we're, 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 we don't even have a. We don't even have a trail. Okay, so let's just, let's just talk about this a little bit, right? So the reason why we have a programmatic level document for Phase 2 and 3 is we, the project team, recognize that this is really complicated. And there's Sanol folks that have issues, but there's also a host of other people that have issues. There's private property owners in the canyon, there's Caltrans that could contest us, there's, uh, people that want to preserve the creek, there's people that are worried about tree removal, right? There's a lot of folks out there, right? And they will comment on this, the environmental impact report. We chose Phase 1 because Phase 1 is really just repurposing existing routes and existing paths, right? And it creates a really good case study to actually build something, to extend the Alameda Creek Trail and provide a bypass for folks that might be cycling on Palomar's Road to get off of State Route 84. We think that could go into construction by 2025. If, well, if, if everything goes fine, the EIR gets certified, there's funds to construct, we think realistically it could be a 2025 project. It would take a couple of years to build, we'd probably be opening it in 2027. Phase 1. In order to build Phases 2 and 3, there would have to be a project-level environmental impact study, an addendum to the project-level environmental study done, which would probably take another one to two years. Then funding would have to be secured, then it would have to be built. I, I think that trying to build this is not something that's going to happen in the next decade.
So you're saying about 10 years?
I don't think anything could happen in, in the next, I'm just thinking about, I mean, look how many years it's taken us to get here.
We've been studying it for eight years already and there's not even a grain of salt move.
Well, you could keep studying, right?
We, we don't want to study, we're, we're done studying, we, we, we have to move, we have to move on.
So then my next question was, what exactly does this trail look like? Because we've talked about a fence and then. Because we've talked about a fence, and then we've talked about animals trying to go through the fence, we've talked, or I've seen like some kind of a fencing like this. Um, so what exactly are we talking about, what, wherever this trail goes, what it would look like? I know it's ten feet, four feet on each sides, it's paved, which is not good for horses, we know that. Right?
Our horseman, right here.
Our horseman knows it's not
Talk about the horses. I'd love to hear comments, because I, I haven't heard anything about horses, so what are horses like?
The example that I like to give everybody is what's going on in Livermore right now. South Livermore has a Class One Trail that successfully, the trails are shared between the horses, the bicyclists, and the pedestrians. And, uh, they, they have an objective in Livermore to connect, uh, end to end with only crossing three streets. But my wife and I have ridden on that trail numerous times, in fact, we had a whole wine ride of sixty riders over, uh, several hours that successfully rode that. So, I'm going to give you some information after the meeting that shows you what Livermore has as their Class One Trail. But, um, she's right, uh, the horse tends to like something more like this, or, or, uh, but not paved. And, and that trail in Livermore provides for that, and it also provides, as a result of that, a place where the horse can ride, um, in a different place than where the bicyclists are going back and forth. And we all know that there's a huge conflict, that the horse people, the bicyclists, and the, and, and that's going on, I'm, I'm a equine advocate, so I'm very active in that right now. Um, and we have to figure out what we're gonna do because the bicyclists are coming in hard. But the horses still deserve a chance to be able to, to have, um, people's dream come true when they finally have a horse. It doesn't need to be a nightmare, uh, sharing the road with, with bicycles. So, that's a, that's a major overriding issue, but Livermore, I think, has done a really nice job, and so I'm gonna give this gentleman a lot of information about what they've done in Livermore.
And the prints?
So, so the trail, the, I, so if I was gonna think about what this trail's gonna look like, it's probably gonna look a lot like the Alameda Creek Trail is, right? It's paved, it has soft shoulders on either side, it's very gently sloping. Um, there's locations, especially up against the railroad tracks, or where there's the more rugged sections where there's large falls, there's a fence that's installed, right, along the path. Ideally, not chain link, ideally something a little nicer than that.
Don't want something that you can climb over.
What about the, what about the animals? Can the animals move through the fence?
Uh, yeah, so the idea was to have, um, separations in the fence so that animals could move through.
And you're gonna know where the separations are, right?
Well.
We talked to them, they said.
I, I went once, and then I said like, I don't wanna go on this at all. I've been only once on that. It's not, it, it, it feels like as if you're going under the bridges, and it, it doesn't feel like you're on a trail, or on a bike trail, or anything like that.
But it's a very
I don't know how many people are commuting on that.
It's an urban environment, though, right?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so this, this trail would not, would not look anything like that. You can't compare that with this.
Oh, oh, yeah, well, what, what I, what I, I guess what I'm saying is when, when, the feel of it, I mean, just literally, right?
That's what I'm saying, you, you go, once, I only went once on it, and then I said like, I'm not gonna go on this at all.
I get your point, I get your point, yeah, I get your point, I get your point.
Yeah. Fences and all that, I don't even remember how they were.
Well, they, there's fences in locations along the Niles Canyon Trail, because the trail gets close to the railroad tracks. And there's large falls too, so there has to be a way to keep you from falling off, off the, off the, off the wall.
How many cars can you select to park here? So, you said, um, Mission Peak is a thousand, and you compare it to Alameda Creek?
I, I don't remember, but it is all included in the environmental impact report, I, I don't have that data with me.
And we don't know that Mission Peak is a thousand, that was just a number that was sent to us.
Yes. There, it is all included in the environmental impact report, and you're, it's all, look in the traffic and transportation section.
Is it already in there, or are you going inside?
In, when the environmental impact report is released, it will be there.
Okay, it's not there yet.
I will, I will come, we will come to, we will, we will give a postcard out, right?
Yeah.
And we will come to the C A C and let you know when it's coming out.
Am I right in thinking, though, since you're not taking notes, that probably the best thing for us to do is write down these ideas and send them in?
Every time I notice, every time I've written something down, that's something I haven't heard before.
Yes, we've heard a lot of this, so I have about five notes on here that I'm
So, would you say we don't have to write in?
If we don't capture it in the environmental impact report?
Yeah.
You need to provide a response.
You should write it and send it to us no matter what.
You can send, you can send anything you want to info@nilescanyontrail.org, and I will respond to you that I received it.
Even if you
I don't want people thinking because they commented this evening
Yes.
that that necessarily
No, perfect point, and you don't have to read the thousand-page E R A to provide, or E I R, to provide us a comment, you can just provide us a comment.
So, I think Jim's idea, which was a sterling one, he needs to write that down and send it in. Even though you said we'll take a look at it.
Trust me, we're gonna dust that one off, because this is the reason why, why I'm here tonight, to hear these things.
So, he doesn't have to write that down?
No, he does, but he, but here, what I'm saying, when the, when the environmental impact report is released, if you want to comment on it, and if you want to say that we do not believe the fencing is wildlife-friendly because animals can't find paths, that is a really good comment to ask. And since I asked that comment, I'm gonna make sure that's in the document. Yes, sir.
Uh, can we talk about the bridge at Palomar's a little bit?
Yes, yes.
Will emergency, if anybody parks it now, right?
There's a parking lot proposed at the base of Palomar's at the bridge.
How many slots? Like ten or twenty? It's pretty small, isn't it? It's a small parking lot at the base of Palomar's.
Not much room.
There's not much space though.
It's a little church there, so you're not gonna try to take property to the west, there?
And the, the bridge makes the first phase a completely independent utility, so you don't go to the end of the trail and then just turn around and go back. So, if you're on a bicycle, you come over Calva-, over Palomar's Road, down the bridge, around Niles, up Mission, and then you could do a big loop loop. And you don't have to park at Palomar's, they, bike riders, they, they park everywhere, they ride fifty miles, it's just it's providing an option for people.
What is the name of that alternative that you're gonna dust off?
I think there's, well, so there's a bunch of sub-alternatives, so, 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 you know, we talk about the North Canyon Trail, the South Canyon Trail, we talk about ending in Sanol. We've talked about different places where on Flin Hill the project might end, and now we're talking about different locations in the Water Temple where it might end.
But is there, you said we're gonna dust off, uh, twenty sixteen?
There's no name.
No name?
No name.
Okay.
Um, so you've talked about how the road, the trails like, is gonna be on the south side of Niles Canyon, coming in from Fremont, right? So, my question is, why are you making a bridge over the road? Wouldn't that be a lot more work to do versus just continuing it on that side, the south side?
So, this goes back to, uh, a lot of the conversations that were held in twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen, with the North Canyon Trail versus the South Canyon Trail. When the trail is on the South Canyon side, it's following existing pathways along most of the route. There's existing streets, existing infrastructure, things that are there today. On the north side of the trail, the terrain is extremely rugged, lots of retaining walls would be necessary, and in initial conversations with the railway, we could not find a common agreement that the trail could share the railroads right of way. So, the decision, kind of the preferred approach, was just to shift it onto the south side? Because that made it easier and faster to construct to get from Niles into the canyon.
So, from the point where the bridge, where we cross over the creek, there's, this terrain gets substantially steeper, and the U P R, our railroad, is right here, and then the creek is right here, so there's really no room to squeeze in.
On the south side.
On the south side.
Okay.
And it connects to the Palomar's, um, and also the park.
So, what, what happened, yeah, what happened with Palomar's, so Palomar's, you don't see that actually come into the discussion until twenty seventeen, maybe? When there was, um, one, having a connection and getting folks bikes, bikes off Highway Eighty-four helps funding, right? It actually provides funding for the project. Two, there was a lot of interest from the bike community in actually making that connection, so that's why that shows up there.
I have a question, so is it against the law for them not to stop at stop signs?
They have, they're motor vehicles, they have to follow
They go through, this whole corner is so dangerous, it's unbelievable.
That's his job.
Well, I mean, it, it's really an enforcement issue, right? Stopping a stop sign, and I, I would say, look at drivers too.
The stop, please, they're going really fast, and they're just going through, that's gonna be an issue. People are gonna get hurt, and it's the same on the east.
But if you notice, the drivers are the ones that get the tickets, but not the bicyclists.
Doesn't matter if they're dead.
Can we talk about next steps, just because the time is now seven forty, so just to reiterate, we're hoping to get a postcard, the E I R is ready, draft E I R is ready to go. You'll present it, the Sanol system, the rest is coming.
Here's what I'm gonna do. I'm going, we're gonna release the postcard, we're gonna present it to C A C. I'm going to send an email out to everybody that's emailed info.
Okay.
Plus, some of you folks, I actually have your contacts, I'm actually gonna send another email to you all about this, so I hope that that gets the word out.
We'll also be at the C A C next Wednesday. So, get, get on Zoom, you'll, you'll see us there.
And I really encourage you, when you craft your comment, do not craft a comment that's about the merits of the project. So, you can take a quick, if you Google it, you can see a lot about legal law, and it doesn't have to be a really complex thing, you wanna craft a reasonable comment.
And how do we do that? How do we, when the, how do we know when the report comes out, and then how do we respond?
I'm gonna cut, I'm going to send you a postcard.
Oh, and tell us.
I'm gonna email you, I'm gonna come to the C A C.
Where will the E I R, E I R be available if you don't have it at the library?
I think we actually print a hard copy, and we have it, it's usually at the county clerk's office. It's usually, it's usually in Alameda County at the clerk's office there. Uh, yeah, that's helpful, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I think, um,
It'll be online though, right?
It'll be online, yeah, I think, I think that's a really good point, so we'll, um,
Yeah, we'll, uh,
Usually we print, we print about six of them out and distribute them out throughout the county, so that's a really, thank you for making that.
Let's just get something on the bulletin board.
Yeah, put a copy here, if it's a thousand pages, then you need a little bookshelf.
We have the post office.
Are you on the agenda? You were talking about, Rick, about the, um, C A C meeting, are you on the agenda? Is any of this on the agenda?
About the C A C meeting?
Yeah.
Um, I don't think the agenda came out yet, right? I, I, I don't think so.
It usually comes out about a week before, and so I think it's probably unlikely it's out right now.
Tomorrow, maybe, it's one week.
Oh, okay.
If we add our email address to info@
If you send an email to info@nilescanyontrail.org, or go to nilescanyontrail.org, there's a place to click, if you type in your email, you're recorded, and you will get
Great.
information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate it. Have a lovely evening, everybody. We'll see you next week.
Thank you very much.